To order this, the August 18th meeting of the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees. We are live. All right. Item one of the agenda, do we have any additions or changes that anyone would like to make? Nope. Item number two, public comment. Seeing no one in the gallery, we will move on to item number three. Item number three is the approval of the June minutes.
And there are only two of you here. So, I mean technically that's a quorum of three because there were only... Oh, wait. I don't know. I don't think you can.
Yeah, I don't think that we can. Check. Let me double check real quick with.
I mean, it's half of.
Yeah, half plus one.
Yes, we don't have it.
Nope, we do not have it. Okay, so we will. Put that off until next meeting.
I will try to remember to put them in again.
Very good. Item number four, a quick discussion of our July meeting, which was the Intellectual Freedom Training from the director of, or the interim director of the Iowa City Public Libraries.
Yeah, I just thought it would be nice to kind of recap for folks and chat a little bit about it. And then, there's no really any.
Right.
Like an orientation meeting sort of.
I don't remember who was there. Stephanie was there, and me, and the mayor.
Scott, Scott, we all knew you were there.
And Chris, the mayor, was there.
And there was supposed to be one other council member, but they had another meeting at the exact same time. But they were both supposed to be out, so they split duties.
Very good.
So, if anyone has any comments.
Does anyone have any comments, or?
I think it was just a good reminder to get that information out in front of us. And another good reminder just how important libraries are. And just so how, and how proactive they are in serving the community at large. So, it was, it was really great information. It was, like I said, a good reminder, but it was, she did a wonderful job presenting it. But again, I just reiterate just how important libraries are. I mean, it's, yeah.
Herumth. I would agree.
I thought Ann did a fantastic job. And really, I'm really hoping, crossing fingers, that they will name her director. The minute director instead of.
Yeah.
Is she a candidate? Of course.
And she has some, I mean, she's very willing to partner and work with us even more. I mean, Ed Worth was as well, their former director. But I think Ann's more even willing to look at pursuing some of those digital partnerships that I'd love to talk more about, like sharing a platform for, of all of our, like a library card that would work at all libraries. Or that their library card, wherever they hold the library card, would work at all of the libraries. And some other things. So, I'm super excited to see that.
Kind of like that metro thing that Cedar Rapids and.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we sort of have a little, little one of that, but not quite as.
Right.
All extensive, so it'd be nice. All right.
Anything else?
Well, I would just also say thank you for organizing that. That was really great. Thank you.
All right, item number five. Let's move on to the director's report.
All right, well, we are very early in the budget year. As you can see, there are a lot of budget pages. I included the June end of year budget, which we ended at 98%, which I thought was quite, pretty darn good.
Yeah.
A nice, we didn't go over, we gave a little bit back to the city, which I don't mind at all if we don't need it. And then, our average for this time of year, in one month in, is 7% and, or 8%, and we're at seven, so we're sitting really well. Just for starting off. We do have a couple potential expenses that, looking at just some database things and adding, we're adding a thing called Shout Bomb, which is going to help us with, help us with our text messaging to patrons, which was, we were fortunately to be able to pay for that out of last year's budget. Eke it out. I don't think there's going to be any additional costs, but Polaris, who is our current, who we use for checkout circulation at the library, our library, integrated library system, sorry, is not playing very nicely with us because we used a third party. They have a third party that they want us to use because we pay them, basically, instead of, and then they get a cut. We have chosen to go with another one that is about half the cost and is a very small shop where he's, I think it might be just one or two guys, but they are uber responsive. They've been, the software has worked really well. They have a very good system set up to test. They sent me a two-page document of references from other libraries that I could call. And they also have another library that's on Polaris that has been working with us to help us do what Polaris has not been willing to help us do.
Is Polaris like not working to integrate or talk nicely?
To give us the reporting and things we need without us paying them, basically, to do it, which is ridiculous because we pay them over $13,000 a year for.
That's disappointing.
For their services and support. So, it's a little annoying.
Yeah.
I've been telling Chris that if he needs, our IT guy, that if he needs me to make a phone call or have a meeting with him, I will do that. But it's just one more, sort of for me, it's another cinch of whether we, it's time for us to start shopping around for a new ILS or not. I don't think I have Andrew quiet at that point where he's wanting to look at switching because of what he has done in, built in Polaris with our catalog, which is really stellar. But I do think if he can be convinced, which the stuff that we need is available in the same platform that Iowa City just chose. They're moving to a new system. They were looking at Polaris, but they went with another one. But it's an open source and it takes a little bit more work on the backside. So, there's a lot of moving parts. I don't know that we'll move to it anytime soon, but it's in my mind.
I appreciate the fact that the company with two people in it is.
They might have more.
To actually have a test environment that you can use.
Yeah, they did really nicely. I mean, he sent me, I want you to find at least four patrons. I want you to have at least five, you know, four staff testing this. And then he wrote back and said, how are you feeling about the test? Are you feeling like they're, you know, going well? It was very intuitive and easy to use. We'll launch on September 2nd, barring any complications with, with the system. I've got some of that down in here that I'll be talking to you guys more about. So, yeah, so hopefully, I think it'll be a good thing in the end. It's just getting through the Polaris being proprietary. So, that's all with the budget unless anyone has questions about either June or the end of year new. Staffing updates, we did have one of our full, part-timers get a full-time job in another city, which is always lovely and bittersweet. She wrote and talked to us and wrote a lovely card to us and was very sad to leave, but has to obviously move on and take full time in her field, which is libraries. So, I'm super excited. I'm sure you know Madison.
And when I talked to her about her leaving, she said her experience with us was very helpful in preparing her for where she was going.
She was lovely and gave us some nice compliments about her, the culture there and things like that. So, it was nice to hear from her. Our other LA1 staff member, Corinne, who left for college this year, she's been with us for two years. An absolute delight and just an amazing, I mean, this teenager is like phenomenal. Like, she works circles around a lot of adults. She is going to study civil, she wants to be an immigration attorney.
Yes!
And she has said, first, we figured out at the end, right when she was, like, her second-to-last day, someone asked her if she was going to come back during breaks. And she looked at me and I said, do you want to stay on the payroll? And she was like, I'll come back and work every day. So, she'll be back at Christmas and she'll be back next summer, barring, unless you change your mind, she could. But she said, I'll work here every day and when I'm a lawyer, I'll still come back and work here.
Oh, I love it. She can do workshops.
She's fantastic. And she helped with summer lunch almost every day the last two summers. Just super, super. Even I helped to run it one day, a couple of days when Corinne, or when Corey wasn't there. So, it's been really nice. We've already have her replacement because we knew that she was leaving. She'd given us several months' notice. So, we are in the process of posting for Madison's library system one and have already, I think we have over a dozen applicants that went out. I think it went out Thursday last week. And so, and a couple of them have library experience and some second languages. So, somebody with ASL, which I'm super excited about.
Oh, yeah.
If they work out. We'll see, we'll see. But we have some good candidates already, so that's nice to see. I haven't looked at their availability. That's the one thing. I leave that to Jen and Kelly to do that stuff. So, hopefully, we will have that pretty much in place soon. It's nice just that the only, most of the LA1s either work another full-time job, go to school, or some combination of things where it's, their schedules are typically a little more limited. So, some work seven hours, some work six, some are able to work, you know, sometimes flex out a little bit more, you know, and work 15 or 14. But it's nice to have the extra bodies that we can then figure out the scheduling, to schedule around the coverage. And then our page position, Molly, is going to go to an LA1. It made sense to have a page when we had a different person in that position who was not able to work the circulation desk for a few reasons. But now that we have someone who's equipped to do that and she's quick. I, actually, she had just gotten some very peripheral training on that when she started. And she jumped in and helped me one day when it was busy and just said, yeah, I can do that. I can help. When I was looking for somebody from the back room, she jumped right in and was able to help. So, she did, she's doing great already, learning. And Kelly's already had her on the desk a couple of times this week with her. So, I think she'll be set to go here in the next week or two. And she's available days, which a lot of them aren't. We only have a couple who really have daytime availability. So, that's nice, too. So, I do have an update on the Harm Reduction Vending Machine. I know I told you guys about it last time. I did want to add a couple in May, or was it May? Whenever it was. I mentioned a couple of things about it. It's completely free to the library. We're considering whether we can add adult diapers to it from the library's part. And then there's several other things listed that it'll have in it. And those could change and morph a little bit. It's based on public health. They'll be giving some of it away and some of their partners are giving, are donating some of the things. Insulation and training was supposed to be this week, but our city attorney has taken a look at the MOU and had a few questions and changes he wanted to see. And they are, I think they're very receptive and open to that, but it has to go back now to, through the city, the county attorney and the city attorney working together to bring another iteration of that. I had already signed it. Sometimes I don't ask because I don't want to know. Because I, I mean, honestly, I told him, I try so hard to remember to ask you, but this seems pretty self, pretty easy and simple, straightforward. But the part that's missing for, in his part, is the indemnification for the city. He doesn't want any responsibility since it's anonymous and we don't know who, we aren't tracking people, which of course we would not. But in that case, he wants to make sure that any, any, that the products are safe. Everything going in there is safe and free of harm from it for anybody, which is kind of ironic since it's a Harm Reduction Vending Machine. But we will work through it. I still think we'll end up getting it. And I'm really hoping it will be a quick turnaround and we'll still get it this week.
It's a phenomenal idea.
They are talking about having a really nice reception at one of the libraries, either us or Corville. And we're going to flip a coin to see who gets it. I was really hoping for it, but now we'll see.
Just get a weighted coin.
Right. I've got a coin for you now. I just had to mention that we do have two new guinea pigs, Gretchen and Regina. If you don't get that reference, they were, on Wednesdays, they wear pink from the Mean Girls movie. They're great. We love them. They spent a week in the back room and they were very shy. And a lot more production of cleanup, things to clean up. And Melanie was sort of like, ooh, we got to get used to this. We do have three staff who are pretty much, Melanie is the main person, but we have two other staff who back her up. So, who are feeding, cleaning, all those things with them. And they have, especially one of them, Regina's getting very sassy already. She's already, you know, bellowing for attention and coming to the front of the cage to stare at people when they come up to see her. Gretchen, the brown one, is a little more shy, but seems to be coming out of her shell. Melanie wants them to be a little more socialized, so she's hoping like on Wednesday nights when she's there, she'll have them out in a little tub or something on the desk for a while for people to pet and things. Mainly just like, we do, again, we, we'll have a thing that says, please wash your hands, don't touch near their faces, you know, that type of thing. Because Grant was like, oh, but lawyers. But he's always super helpful with that stuff. So, he perked up when I mentioned a meeting. Again, I did not ask on that one. But we've had a guinea pig for ages, so it didn't even occur to me. He reminded me that I need to, about biting and other things.
I was talking to someone about the guinea pigs and they came up with an idea of having some sort of thing to make it look like they were reading. Like some sort of a.
Like reading, reading?
Some sort of a prop where there was like a little book in there or something.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they probably eat it, but we do have, they do, they do have an Instagram. I think it's NL Pets Read 2.
Like within the cage, like a.
Oh, yeah, to have it up so they're always reading.
A little, a little book made out of wood or something that.
They would eat that.
They would chew it, yeah.
They would chew that right up. I'll tell Melanie though, I'll pass it on. But they are already quite the talk. They have been, besides when Matilda died, they have been the highest engagement. Those two, the guinea pigs have been the highest engagement on social media. Everybody's like tagging each other and making funny comments about me already loving them. And people are coming in all excited to see them. So, it's been, it's a quite, it's a fun community thing to have. So, the next one I was going to chat with you guys about, Overdrive Content Controls. Overdrive is the company that we use for all of our eBooks and e-audios right now. They pretty much have a monopoly. They don't necessarily, we have, we have a couple of their options and we're sort of looking at those as an, as an addition, as an extension to what we already have. We won't go away from Overdrive. That is who we share our collection with, Corville and Iowa City, and a large content. And they've been great to work with. But they introduced in the last month, or I guess it was in June, they sent out an email, basically nobody knew about it that I know of. Maybe people did, but the people I've talked to did not, saying that they were introducing patron content controls, which is a form of censorship. So, on the patron's side, when the patrons go in, they can set so that they can only view certain age levels based on publisher. That all intents and purposes sounds like a nice thing, but it also is, again, a form of censorship that means that kids aren't having free access. They're not having the same access to materials that they would have when they come in the library. I always use the example of if a child was in trouble or in danger at home and they were seeking help for that, there's a chance that their parents could cut them off from getting what they need, the materials they need to help them. Or if they had some kind of thing going on in their lives with a mental thing, emotional or mental health thing, and they were wanting that to be kept private for whatever reason, they may not be able to access the information they need. So, so it is a concern and, and we cannot turn it off. It's not something that we're able to turn off. The other piece of that that's a little more concerning was that on this, at about the same time, Andrew was going to put in an order on Overdrive. And he was, had a box pop up that asked him if he wanted to make content controls on some of the item, on the items that he was buying as, based on age again, and it's based on publisher. That to me was really alarming. And so, I got in a message to Iowa City. Iowa City being the main point of contact, knew that there were things coming on the patron's side. I'm not sure that they knew. It was inadvertent that we got that. It was not supposed to be turned on without us requesting it. So, we turned it off. But the larger concern across the country, for me, especially with small and rural libraries, is that librarians might see that as, oh, look, I can do this now. And then we have this slippery slope of censorship that's happening on the library side. And then we have fuel for censors and, you know, book challenges, book banners, legislators. If we turn it off, are they going to come back and say, oh, look, they don't, you know, they could have done this and they didn't. They want people to get, you know, bad books or all the things. So, I went to a friend of mine who runs a, an organization called Library Futures, which is a, all about privacy and intellectual freedom and research around those topics. And she knows a great deal about it. And there's been a couple other vendors who've done some similar things. One of those vendors is called Hoopla, which is also an eBook thing. They started making content decisions, basically, and very quickly backed off when they got pushback from the American Library Association. So, Jenny and I, the other Jenny's spelled just like me, and I contacted ALA and had a meeting with the American Library Association and the Intellectual Freedom Committee about this very thing. What basically came out of it is that the Intellectual Freedom Committee is going to look at potentially writing some vendor guidelines. My request is, please don't ask us to obey before we need to. They, their response is because of some states that are requiring some of these things. But it's not every state and it's not a one-size-fits-all.
You don't need to have preemptive compliance.
Let's not comply ahead of time. So, I'm hoping that moral move forward on that. I've been in touch, I spoke to my friend Chris Brown, who runs Chicago Public Library. He had a lot of choice words in our phone conversation, a lot of them. So, he was really unhappy and he and I have not had a chance to loop back on it. He was going to send someone to that meeting and it did not end up happening. It was a really quick turnaround for us to get into that meeting. But Iowa City did sit in on that meeting. And I think we'll see what happens moving forward. I don't think we're going to see a change with what Overdrive has done now. But I'm hoping ALA has a good relationship with them. And I'm hoping that the, if there are folks from the Office of Intellectual Freedom reach out to the leaders at Overdrive, that they might consider backing off, at least on the library side, the staff side. It's, I mean, to me, it's very concerning if someone's not educated enough to know better. And some of our small libraries may not have the training they need to know better always. A lot of them do. A lot of them are amazing and are already doing all this hard work, but there's a concern for those who may not. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it's another example. I think it's a pretty interesting example of what we're seeing. Vendors are getting pressure from state libraries. They're getting pressure from other, you know, outside sources, librarians. So, I understand what's happening. It's just, I don't know how we're going to resolve it. I don't, it's just a continual sort of challenge that I'm hoping we don't have forever. I just wanted to let you know that the state annual report is in. I just put that in there because I've, this is the earliest I've ever completed it. And I should say I, it's Andrew and I. Andrew does a great deal of it. There's also a lot of parts that are now filled, pre-filled for us and we just have to check them and make sure that the numbers are correct from the state end. So, some of it's automated. The first year that I was library director was really overwhelming to try to do that report and collect all the data. But we've really got it nailed down pretty well and have the data pretty much available to us. It doesn't take nearly as long. And now the data is accurate. I think when I started, some of the data was just not really accurate. It was sort of fabricated based on what they thought was the best guess because we didn't have the means to do it well. So, I'm pretty excited to have it done. And then Melanie should be, I asked them to try to have a community impact report done based on that data by the end of September. I'm hoping, I have not looped back to see if that's going to be when it is, but as long as it's reasonable for them. I won't, I'll, I'll back off that date if they, they don't think it's reasonable. And then I just wanted to add in here the summer patron count because also I just kept seeing more and more and more new patrons from the beginning of June until, we had an average of 50 new people come in the library every week to get library cards. That has not really slowed down. There was one weekend in June or July that I had 17 new patrons on Saturday and Sunday come through, which was crazy. But it hasn't seemed to slow down. I mean, I was on the desk for an hour today and did two new patron cards in the hour that I was on the desk. So, we're continuing to see more and more people coming. One of those folks was from out of town and one was from here. So, it's kind of exciting. I just thought it was fun, a little thing to show you guys. It was crazy busy today. I think people are getting their last week of, before school starts ends. So, we, we got to see a lot of folks in the library. And that is all I have today. I figured it would be a fairly quick meeting. It's just now, if you guys have any questions on any of the patron or the staff reports, we had a wonderful time at the fair. If you hadn't had a chance to look at the report that I give to the county and city that's in there, you should take a look. And then we do have some special library cards with guinea pig art coming up for September for children. I personally said we should sell them and make money, but we're going to see how September looks and then we'll go. But they're kind of the same artwork that's from the book, and they're really cute. I'm excited about having them, some new ones. We'll use them for some outreach and things we're doing in the month. And Back by Popular Demand is a tiny art show. We've already had a couple people asking when that starts. That is, and we did have, I know I brought up to you guys the queer elders of Iowa City last time that they were coming for a program, multi-generational program. And it was really, I attended and it was just really heartening to see them interact and talk to each other and tell stories with each other, ask questions. They expressed wanting to do it again, which I think is greater, do another program like it. Talking about their history from back in the 60s and 70s, the difference in reception that they dealt with then, moving out of state and how it was different in other states. So, it was very interesting. And I think, we, we actually only had, I think, four or five youth there. And a couple of those youth were like young adults, like 20-somethings. But I really think everyone enjoyed it and interacted well with each other. So, it was a lot of fun. And our, our two young staff that were there with me also were, really seemed to enjoy it. And then Andrew, just, I'll point out his circulation numbers and his, because I think it's pretty, so across the country, we hear trends of that circulation is trending down in some libraries. I hear that, but when I talk to my friends in libraries, they're not seeing it. So, I don't know what libraries, like, I think some of the bigger libraries, it might be trending down. But I'm not sure. Because I, I talked to a group the other day and everybody in that group said that their statistics are up. So, maybe some of it is COVID, but I think even pre-COVID, they were, people were starting to see a trending, a downward trend. But we are seeing, as you see, almost a 4% growth in the last year.
You see it as related potentially to some of the book challenges in some of the districts?
It could be. It could be. And I think for us, a lot of it is just how intentional Andrew is with his collection development. He does a really, really nice job and has some pretty effective tools that he uses. So, I think that might have to do with it, too. And then he just did the little screenshot of summer, which is always fun to see because summer's always crazy. The only area that we don't, aren't seeing a super big increase is teen. That is an area that's kind of dipped a little, which I find interesting. It's never been a like uber-popular reading area, but we had a time where a lot of adults were reading in that area. And so, I don't know, that, that was kind of fascinating to me. But, and we have, I think he's mentioned it before, but I always think it's fun that the, the picture books aren't moving up as fast as you would think, but the juvenile is. So, we, we believe that's just the, the community aging, growing up into the chapter books. And I'll tell you what, I checked in, I think probably 70 books after my desk time today, and I think 40 of them were from one child. And they were chapter books and graphic novels. And so, they weren't baby books. They were.
You'd mentioned the teen, adults reading the teen books. I mean, I must admit, I love Suzanne Collins.
Oh, me too.
And every time she has a book coming out, I'm going to read it. I don't care if it's classified.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good book.
Oh, yeah. I read a ton of.
Yeah.
I've always read teen.
Good story's a good story.
And a lot of times the teen authors don't, they just get cut to the chase. So, and you know, where there's a lot of fluff built into, you know, 800-page book that could probably be 500 pages. The teens are not going to have that patience to read like that. So, then teen authors know they have to tell a nice succinct story. So, I think if they do that, well, yeah, you're going to get people reading them. And then I just included the survey for you guys to just take a look. And I included the numbers from last year. So, you can see that almost, without exception, are, we trend up in almost every area. Programming, the programming numbers are insane.
Yeah, I was looking at those. I wanted to mention, that's just phenomenal, seeing those numbers, just great, great work on the staff. And it's wonderful seeing the community engaging in those because I was floored by those numbers.
Yeah, they, I don't know how the staff, and I've had another librarian in the area say, I don't know how your staff does all the things that you guys do with the number of staff you have. Because we have 22 staff. I think Corville has, with their part-timers, like over 40 or 50. They have a lot of part-timers, a lot of part-timers. They have much, a lot more full-timers than we do, too. But, so we just do a lot with, with what we have. And our, our staff is phenomenal.
It's amazing.
It also helps, and I don't know how much of the counts, if, if we're at a program that, that we're actually, we are, the library is a part of that program, it's counted in statistics whether it's a city slate program or not. Some of those city slate programs draw some pretty big crowds. And summer lunch on Tuesdays, those are, those days are counted because our. And summer lunch on Tuesdays, those are, those days are counted because our staff's over there doing activities. So we know, the staff knows when they can and can't count those numbers in. Like we can't count ears in the park because we're just there helping out. It's not a library program. But if it's specific to libraries, then I'm counting it. So does anybody have any questions for me?
No.
Yep. All right, well, that's all I have for you tonight.
Moving on to item number six, the election of officers.
Don't look at me.
I'd voluntarily be president if there isn't.
And I would, I would respectfully request, yes, I would respectfully request not to be an officer this year, as I have been an officer for
Every year.
For, for a very, 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 very long time.
Yeah, I would nominate Scott for president. He was our vice president this last year, stepped in when we needed him to, so I think that he would be a good fit for our president for the next year.
I just need a president, or vice president and a secretary.
Can we just need a vice president?
A vice president just basically covers the meaning of Scott is not available, so that's not a huge lift.
I had to do it once in a year.
And you did great.
Does anyone want to nominate themselves or?
I'm happy to step in wherever you need me.
I'm kind of in the same fashion.
I guess if we're, if we're working with the people that are here, then the, the one that requires more labor would be being the secretary. So whomever thinks, whoever thinks that they have.
Basically, basically I can share some minutes with you to see how, they're pretty succinct.
Yeah.
And then I just would love them quickly and I don't have to scramble the week before to get them.
I will say I'm teaching and taking some classes this next year.
I'm happy to fill that role. Angie's got some big shoes, she does really good minutes, but I'm happy to step in this year and take that if, if that's necessary.
And I'm sure you'd have her, her backup on you.
Yeah.
So whoever wants to do those nominations, I'm going to just be
Yep, then I would, I would nominate Brandy for secretary.
Second that?
All right.
Then we just have Stephanie to nominate as our vice president, filling the role of Scott when he's unavailable.
Very good.
Thank you.
I nominate Stephanie for that.
And I'll second.
Shall we, shall we vote on these officers as a slate, so we can just say aye once?
Beautiful.
Yes.
Yes.
Putting forwards Scott as next term's president, Stephanie as vice president and Brandy as our secretary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing nothing in the negative, the slate of officers is elected.
Yay. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Let's make a note to update.
Yep.
So those are effective at the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Okay.
And I can, I don't know, did I shoot you some of the, the stuff that I use for, for presidenting?
That's a verb.
I have a spreadsheet with everyone's contact, some loose contact information and, and I don't know, maybe a Word document that actually is, that kind of just reuses the, as the agenda. And then I think I have the same sort of stuff when I was actually the secretary.
Yeah, that would be great.
But Angela probably has far superior.
I never got to see her minutes, just Angela's.
Document, documentation going forward. Very good, I will forward that along.
Scott had to follow Brady, Brady, who was also, Brady Bird, who was a really, really a note taker, a note taker. He was pretty darn good. We've had great note takers, or minute takers. Notes and minutes are quite different.
Different.
Yes, yes.
Exactly. Very good. And our last, one of our last items on this, number, is item number seven, Remembrance of Matilda, who passed away on the second. Of the, the recent iteration of, of guinea pigs, Matilda was probably the best received. Glad Stanley, Ramona and Beesus.
Matilda was just a personality all her
Yeah.
That's a great name.
She was, kids would come, we had a couple of kids read to her and she would sit right up by the kids and listen to them up front. I could, I could foresee Regina being similar. We'll see.
Yeah.
That's so sweet.
My daughter loved Matilda. It was one of her favorite things, to the library to see Matilda.
Lots of
And then we had to say goodbye to Matilda before we left.
I had adults come in, just like a younger couple that used to come in every, every time they worked out and say hi to Matilda. And we have someone who makes, well, I'm sure she'll do it for this, these guinea pigs, but makes some really cute toys out of like, I don't know, binding and I don't know what.
A book.
All edible toys.
A book.
A book, we'd have to ask, request it.
My goodness, wow.
Yeah, I was in the rec center one time to return some, recycle some batteries. I'm like, I want to pop in there to take a look at them.
Anyway, so, yes, we have a memory of Matilda.
Very good.
The tireless ambassador.
The tireless.
I love that. Beloved by the community.
Yeah, she was eight, so that's really long. Seven is, I mean, usually on the high end. She managed to live to eight.
Wow.
She had a cushy life. And we had initially weren't sure if we were going to get two. Now, there's a difference of opinion, a lot of people say that they need to be the two because they get lonely. Matilda never cared. And we had another city who wanted to know all the details about Matilda and they were like, well, we're getting two because we've heard. And they got two and she kept messaging Melanie, saying they're biting each other and biting. Melanie's like, I don't know what to tell you, like we, I can't, I told you, we have one. Which was really funny, Melanie's like, I don't know what to say to her. And I'm like, you don't have to answer, like
The guinea pig whisperer.
We just gave her our basic information about how we cared for her, that's all. But these two were bonded, they were a pair, they had already been together. She said there was another pair, but they were kind of testy with each other and she wasn't sure. So she just went with the two girls.